This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star-Later and the Highland Park Planet on January 5, 2024, and was presented on Borough Hall website at www.hbpro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and as remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Craig, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster here.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman George.
Yes, here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here, with a full cup.
Councilwoman Kent Johansson.
AI.
Councilman Pasternak.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Yeah.
Special Counsel Bowman.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoover.
Here.
And tonight I have a proclamation, and this is going to go to Middlesex County Art, recognizing their 75 years of service. And it reads, whereas developmentally and intellectually disabled disability manifest during the formative years of life before the age of 22 and our lifelong in its duration resulting in continuing need for a variety of services designed to support the full inclusion into community life. Whereas it is estimated that approximately 2% of the United States population has an intellectually or developmentally disability, which translates to approximately 178,000 children and adults in New Jersey. And the art of Middlesex County alone serves 333 individuals and their families. And whereas the art of Middlesex County has worked collaboratively with individual with development and intellectual disabilities and their families, organizations, coalitions, state and local agencies. And whereas the art of Middlesex County has valued and promoted effective partnership between community partners, volunteer staff, leadership at all levels. And whereas the art of Middlesex County is guided by this belief that all people with intellectual and developmental disabilities are defined by their own strength, ability, and ability and inherent values, not by their disabilities, and are entitled to respect dignity, safety, and security according to the members of our society, with each is equal before the law. Whereas Middlesex County Art has articulated a positive vision for the future for people with this development or intellectual disabilities, and has categorized publicly that private support in the realization of this vision by its own unwavering commitment to individuals and families, community leadership, staff and volunteer. And whereas in the 75 years of Middlesex County Art, has led the era of providing support here and opportunity with integrity and accountability that reflects quality and excellence in its work, now therefore be understood by the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that Middlesex County State of New Jersey does therefore recognize Middlesex County Art for its 75 years of outstanding dedication and contribution of caring. And we have a proclamation that will be presented today. My voice is a little low tonight. Okay, then we move to approval of minutes. I have a motion to approve the following minutes as distributed March 12, 2024. Redevelopment and regular executive session, March 19, 2024, regular meeting. March 26, 2024, work session meeting. April 2nd, 2024, regular meeting. Roll call.
So.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes, to all.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kent Johansson.
Outstanding.
And Councilman Pasternak.
Yes.
Now we move to council record. Councilmember Kent Johansson.
Still keeping things good, things good. But I do have a few announcements. So tonight we are introducing the budget. This is the administrator who later, we'll give more details on that a little bit later. And the rent control board is scheduled to meet next Thursday, April 16, 5:30 here in council chambers. As of now, I don't think they have any hearings, but all is welcome to come and it will be on Zoom as well. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Hi, my name is Matt Hale. I chair the economic development committee. And it notes itself to bring my glasses for next time. Quite close enough. I think it'll be okay. But thank you. So I wanted to start by saying that May 5 is the 5K Street Fair coming up. So always a big event for Highland Park. So come out and run and play in the street fair. It's a great event. I also wanted to congratulate all of Highland Park, but particularly to the restaurants. We're just listed in NJ.com as a town you may not know about, but we have fantastic restaurants. And so they listed pretty much every restaurant we have in Highland Park, but they certainly did. Potari, Ridge, and Mary Ray, and just pies. So there's a whole bunch of restaurants that were listed as a small town sandwiched between Brunswick and Piscataway, which I didn't like, but I like the fact that we have the best restaurants for the town.
Sorry. It was sandwiched, I guess.
Yeah. So that's exciting. That's great to see. In addition to the budget, which I'll hear tonight from Borough Administrator Hoover, we're also introducing the Main Street budget. And I just wanted to make a quick note that we have, a number of years ago, we had not given increases or authorized increases in the Main Street budget for a number of years. And we decided to try and have incremental increases over time. So there's not a big increase all at once. This year, actually, the increase we're proposing for the mid-tax is about 5%, which anyone who has gone out for a gallon of milk knows is we're just keeping out of inflation. But we've also done some allocations for more borough revenues to Main Street and some matching programs to come from the MPP. The goal of funding for Main Street and our increased Main Street attention are really designed to target and support Main Street's ability to give support to existing downtown businesses. They're going to do things like create more funding for signage, side grants, small business grants, coupons and gift cards, things that are really paying attention to businesses that are in town to do all they can to make sure that they can thrive. And then in addition, we're also looking at ways that some of the things that Main Street has been doing sort of before and throughout the pandemic, things like vouchers at the farmer's market, some things with the 5K that maybe the borough is going to be able to focus on so that Main Street can focus primarily on business support and retention of existing businesses and then also attracting new ones. So it's a little bit of a shift in focus. And we wanted the budget to match that as well. So also, just a quick update on the MPP grant. As many of you know, it's a state grant. We're in our third year of it. We're waiting for approval for our budget from the county. We've done so far a number of different things. Flower planting, snowflakes up on Woodbridge Avenue, a number of side grants and improvements. When we get the approval from the county for the next year, we're going to, we have budgeted things like a car show that we're hoping to bring. And since Woodbridge has a number of car operators, about a car show might be a very fun thing to bring people into town. Another of other things, including porch rants for people who live in the area for helping fix the upgrades on their porches. And then also, we're working with a company called Beyond Name, which creates digital presence for small local businesses. And so those are all things we expect to be able to start moving ahead with the MPP. We are in the process of looking for an economic development assistant that will help with this, a staff member. So that'll be exciting when that happens. And then you're going to hear tonight about some exciting news about Track A. I'm going to let Joe Bowman go into the details of it, but it's a great opportunity for the borough, a great opportunity for a number of businesses in town to really move Track A forward in the redevelopment. And so I think it's an exciting opportunity. And Joe and Terry have done a fantastic job of sort of making this process work well. And then lastly, as we said, we are hoping again that to have a public meeting with Track C in the near future. I don't have a date for that specifically, but as the mayor stated again and again, this is something that we're very committed to have an open meeting where we'll show the plans of Track C as it comes forward. So there's a lot of exciting things going on in the future. A lot of exciting things going on now. So get out and support your businesses up and down Main Street and Raritan. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Canavera. Thank you, Mayor. Tara Canavera, Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. The Board of Health wants you to be aware that due to milder and wet winter weather, mosquito season starts earlier, so protect yourself, your family and your pets. The Commission for Universal Access met with the Special Education Parent Advisory Group to work together for inclusion for all residents. Look for them to be sharing a table at the 5K Street Fair and Earth Day event. The Community Food Pantry is open the 2nd and 4th Thursday, 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM, and again, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the Saturday following the Thursday from 9:30 AM to 10:00 AM. The Highland Park gives a food pantry is every Tuesday at St. Sixteen Teen Center from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Like I've said in the past, unfortunately, both programs have seen an increase in families needing their services. The Human Relations Commission will have their next meeting tomorrow via Zoom. The information is on the Borough website. You can also find leaves for the gratitude tree at local businesses and Borough offices to add your leaves to the tree. The Mental Health Commission wants you to know that it is Stress Awareness Month. Everyone has stress and learning to cope with our stress and finding healthy ways to deal with these situations can go a long way in living a healthy and positive life. Some ways include guidance adaptation, practice deep breathing, and maintaining physical exercise and good nutrition. Lastly, the 988 Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress and for emergency crisis resources for you and your loved ones. Please call if you or a loved one is in need. That's the end of my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George. I'm the liaison between the Borough Council and our public safety entities. But first, a little off the public safety, I'd like to give some recognition to Reverend Seth of the Reform Church's Housing Corporation. Great feature article on NPR being broadcast nationally tonight with regard to their affordable housing program, which is operated largely without government funding and privacy. Highland Park Public Library at the trustees' meeting last night, we got an update from Mr. Boles. We just want to make sure that we finally vote on the roof tonight. We got an update on the library work. Most of the furniture is in now, except for the larger items such as the circulation desk, some of the other installations. Tonight, we award, hopefully, the roofing contract to Transiris for the roofing project. That's a re-roofing of the entire membrane system and repairs and updates to the HVAC system, which sometimes gives rise to leaks. The work remains on schedule. We still anticipate reopening sometime in June. Most of the replacement furniture already in place, but the user volume is still on, with online services is still continuous. And if you look around, see places in town, or look online, their activities almost every day still continuing, the library and online usage is up. The Highland Park Police Department, the consent agenda has resolution tonight, which authorizes the Borough Police Department to accept the donation of a trailer and three police vehicles from the PBA's nonprofit organization. This is part of the implementation of the Kushner Grant. And the department will put the new vehicles to use and save on the borough's capital funds for other improvements, which we've studied for years. This is a one-time break, but it certainly helps us with our capital acquisitions. The Highland Park Police Department is also very active with local organizations this spring. And in the month of May, they will be conducting a pack-a-patrol car event for the Edison Municipal Animal Shelter. From May 1st to May 31st, you can drop off donations for the animal shelter, which will be donated to help support their work. The department will be posting the advertisements with the QR code to access the Amazon wishlist for items which the shelter needs to continue its work. There'll also be information online on the website, on the Facebook page for the police department with the QR code and the details. You can make arrangements to drop off at the lobby. And at the end of the event, we literally will pack a police car and take everything over, assuming that there's space for the driver. The police department is also a partner for the Community Food Distribution Program. Partners are the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, Goya Foods, the Highland Park Food Pantry, and the New Jersey LGBTQ Law Enforcement Liaison. They'll be distributing non-perishable and canned goods on April 25th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the food pantry. The partners are assisting in the distribution, but all of the food is being donated in kind by Goya Foods. It's a great program and a great gift from Goya. In addition, that same LGBTQ Law Enforcement Liaison provided training for the borough last Friday, which the police department's supervisors and some line officers participated in. The consent agenda also has a resolution tonight for the Highland Park Fire Department to authorize the fire departments to accept the donation of the new engine from the volunteer fire department, which is nonprofit. Again, this is implementing the Kushner Grant and then the new engine, which is almost ready to go on the road. Still hasn't been approved by New Jersey, the state of New Jersey yet, but Chief Gershon told me tonight that he and Norm thought that it would be on the road very shortly. But that's the last step. This is the official recognition and acceptance of the grant. And that's my important, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Posternak.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilor Jason Stelnik. I chair the Recreation Arts Committee. Within that is the Department of Community Services and all the programs that they offer. So first off, I'd like to just mention a quick reminder that the Department of Community Services offers grocery transportation, online food shopping assistance while we are still without a grocery store. And it will count down days for that to be over. But if you need assistance in the meantime, please reach out to the Saddle Community Center at 732-819-0052. And then some programming highlights in the community center today. We held the Spring Luncheon. We had over 100 people. And entertainment was provided by HP's Own Drama, the Highland Park's Own Drama Club. And the next luncheon event will be on May 13. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, April 17, a very auspicious day, at 1:00 PM at the community center, there is the Matter of Balance Program, which is a program for older adults that is designed to reduce the fear of falling, which can cause people to restrict their activities. So this helps to trust that fear, continue on with their activities. They also wanted me to mention this is the accounting program. I'd like to announce there's the Middlesex County's 90th, 90's Birthday Bash celebration. It's not birthdays, from the 90's. It's people who are 90 years or greater. Any Highland Park resident is invited to celebrate this Middlesex County Birthday Bash. It is on Friday, May 3rd, Piscataway Senior Center from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then some other rec programming highlights. Just wanted to note feedback on Matt Hale's report that the Recreation Department will be facilitating this year's kids races at the annual HP 5K on Sunday, April 5th. So please come out and support those kids. They'll be out there running. And the Rec Department will also be having a table at the Street Fair later that day with info on their programs and their summer kids. And then speaking of their programming, just, you know, I always announce that there's just a number, and I counted them up this time. And it's currently 16 adult and youth sport, art, exercise and theater programs. It's a small town, but we are delivering a lot. And I am very thankful for all the hard work they do there at the community center. And then lastly, I just had an Arts Commission update. Tomorrow, Wednesday, 17th, there'll be another book art workshop provided by the Arts Commission. It'll be from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at the community center. This workshop will be an accordion flagbook. So and all materials will be provided, but you may bring collage elements to populate the book. If you'd like to attend, I think there's still time. Sign up in advance by emailing the instructor at APOLCK139@gmail.com. Again, APOLCK139@gmail.com. And that is my report.
Mayor, can I just say, I'm sorry. This is my second meeting back, and I didn't know that we were stating our name and what committee we chair. Last time I left, I was the Council President, Hirsch. So I chair Finance. So everybody, no, I just noticed everyone did that and I didn't get the middle. So I'm sorry. Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kent Johansson. And I'm loving that cup and the sleeve. I think that's a very quite specific cup sleeve too on the key here, a cup over there, which is really cool. It's those types of like flourishes that local businesses can do to really make us feel good about shopping there and really make them, you know, feel like they're really invested in the community. So little stuff like that I love. So obviously, May 5th is a big date coming up around here, and I'm going to add to that. Did you know that May 5th is also Earth Day? Well, Earth Day is every day. Typically, Earth Day is April 22nd everywhere else, but Highland Park, we celebrate it daily, and we're celebrating at our street fair. The whole community is coming together at the annual Highland Park 5K race and Spring Street Fair and Earth Day Fair on May 5th. So in addition to everything that you've heard from Councilman Hale and Councilman Stelnik, the Spring Street Fair activities up and down Raritan Avenue. Sustainable Highland Park has assembled also a terrific Earth Day program. Music, food, environmental activities and education, all conveniently located during the street fair on Moore 3rd Avenue between Raritan and Dennison. Find the full Earth Day performance list at sustainablehighlandpark.org. But just an overview, we'll have Alana Valla, the acapella group from the Highland Park High School, Matt Local Favor's Magnolia Street String Band, Anthony Walker, Raisas Carabinas, and vegan food by Chef Meredith. And there will also be 20 booths with environmental education and interactive exhibits. And if that weren't enough, free native plants. Come on out, be there. It's going to be beautiful. The weather's going to be gorgeous. So and then in conjunction with Earth Day, you know, this is a whole program. So Craig and the Environmental Commission is here. So please come celebrate Earth Day early with a guided tour of the Meadows Trail on Saturday, this Saturday, April 20th, 2024, between 11:00 and 1:00 PM. There's no rain date because it's nature and no registration is necessary. Just a little background of the Meadows Trail. And thank you to Craig for this. It's the largest borough on natural area in Highland Park. It's 18 acres, includes forested areas, wetlands, open streams and important floodplain areas along the Raritan River. And this will be a leisurely, comfortable stroll, but please bring shoes and water. Please bring comfortable shoes and water. And obviously, areas can be particularly muddy too. So please be prepared for that. You meet, and we're going to be meeting at the trail entrance at the base of South Fifth Avenue at the park, at the DPW Garage at 444 Valentine Street. And all ages are welcome. In addition to seeing things pop up, in addition to new signs and stores that's super fresh, Fresh Mart and Giddy's and all that, we're also seeing new trees popping up as well. And we're setting an ambitious tree planting schedule this spring as part of the borough's biannual tree planting program. 72 new trees have been added to our tree canopy. Keeping up with new plantings as many trees age out is really important. And you might have noticed that a lot of our trees are aging out at the same time because many of them are roughly the same age as they were planted when many of the homes were built in many neighborhoods, often around the same time. But how do we care for our new trees? This is going to be really important. So obviously, we have a watering contract that we're authorizing tonight and under the close supervision of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, the administration, and Mayor Foster. We're going to make sure that these trees stay vibrant and resilient and really grow into the shade trees that we need them to be, you know, in the very long term. However, tomorrow, April 17th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, you can find out from experts on the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to learn more. And I am going to return to you because I don't have the URL right in front of me, which I have. This is on Zoom. If you go to www.hbpro.com and just click on the calendar, you'll find a link to this terrific program where you can learn more about our green spaces and how to better support trees, air and water quality, and support noise reduction and shade. Just bulk pickup is about to be underway. Bulk pickup, bulk garbage pickup is by appointment only. Pickups can be scheduled on Wednesdays during April now, May, June, September and October. To make an appointment, please call Public Works at 732-247-9379. And each household may request up to two collections per year. Also, keep in mind that right after the Townline Garage Sale, Tuesday, September 17th and Thursday, September 19th, there will be automatic bulk pickups that you do not need to register for. Materials should be placed curbside no sooner than one hour before sundown or the day prior to scheduled pickup. Materials not properly secured or bundled and unacceptable items will not be collected. For a list of acceptable and unacceptable items, please visit www.hbpro.com. And by the way, my name is Matthew Hirsch. I share with the Public Works Committee in case you're wondering why. Thank you. So Public Works is busy this spring, obviously, and are going to be out there. You might have noticed also springing up are some of our old friends, the potholes. And you know it's that time of year when the roads begin to thaw and the ice reveals the pot marks that sometimes manifest themselves in our roadway. So our crews are going to be out tomorrow, weather depending, but it should be a nice day tomorrow to fill a lot of those potholes. However, if you, they, they don't get filled automatically. So if you see, you know, while, while we're always serving for, for potholes, if you see one, you can also report it at www.hppro.com. Report it first and then put it on Facebook, that's the key. Highland Park Housing Authority had its reorganization meeting last week. Congratulations to Ruby Hope on returning as Chair and Christa Martinez, who was selected as Vice Chair. I just wanted to give a quick acknowledgement of the solar eclipse. It was a really great to kind of feel that bond with the community as we all celebrate science, which is really important. And thanks to Highland Park ETOs for supplying the kids protective eyewear so we can all enjoy the eclipse safely and securely. And I think most of us were able to get pretty much a positive, so that's my report.
Our Administrator.
As you'll be hearing from me during budget hours, bear you a report now, thanks.
Our Attorney. Okay. And me, no, I just, I have a very brief report and I want to start off by echoing something that Councilmember George said. Last Friday, we had training by the LGBQ plus training here. And I want to thank our Police Chief Rick Abrams for helping us to coordinate that with the county. Task force to, to get us that training in place. And we had all our employees and others that came in and I believe that we all got a really good education and we learned a lot. I, I must say, I learned a lot, I learned a lot more than what I thought it was. So it was, it was very good, it was very educational. And this is a part of the seminar that I put together since I became mayor, where we bring in different communities and have conversations. And I, it's not so much a conversation as education or reeducation, but we thought we knew certain communities is to have these conversations where we're being informed. We're given proper educational information and how we work with and within these communities. So more to follow. We are hoping to do the Asian community next and we'll keep you updated as that happens. With that said, I was, we're talking about a lot about Main Street and about economic developments and development of our towns and our, and our, and our town getting highlighted. And New Jersey Food Magazine, which is awesome and I'm really happy for that. But I also want to share with you that last week, Fresh Mart, the new, the new market that we have in town where, where seven eleven used to be. They quick check, I'm sorry, quick check used to be not seven eleven, where quick check used to be, they had a little problem with their signage. And they wrote to me saying, we're having this problem, we need help, we don't know what to do, we want to be good stores in, in town. We want to be received well and we want to support the town and, you know, our, our signage, the sign that we have is a little bit bigger than what they normally, that what we normally conform to. And quickly, I turned it over to Terry and Scott in Coenforcement and in no time, they were able to solve this issue with the signage. And if you drive by, you can see that they're there to have a big, beautiful sign that fits in. Although the property sets back quite a lot, you can still see the sign. And I was happy that these are some of the things that all of us collectively do, the borough staff collectively do to help business succeed here in town. Because we want them to come, we want them to stay, we want them to have a smooth transition into Highland Park. And with that, I want to say welcome. And that's my report. And so now we're going to have our first public participation. Your Attorney, your Attorney Sean. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure if you've seen some of our previous meetings, we have a new policy as far as ground rules go. The mayor runs the meeting, so if you have, if you come up to the podium and you give your name and your address, all questions have to be directed to the mayor. And then the mayor will direct, either she'll respond or she'll write someone else who responds to the question. When all the questions have been asked and this goes to both of the public portions, we're going to close the public portion. And then at that point, no one from the public can engage in the dialogue. And that's the opportunity for any of the professionals that we have up here, the mayor or any council people or the employees to respond to the questions. So thank you very much and I hope you have a great meeting.
Thank you, our Attorney. Public participation, three minutes total, twenty-one minutes total, I'm sorry, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments can be from members of the public, intended in person, which, which will be held first, followed by those attended on Zoom. And with that said, public is there, you remember the public, which is the con. Please go to the microphone, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Craig Ambro. I currently live in New Brunswick, I've been a thirty-year resident of Highland Park and very involved in the Meadows Forest. That's something I was very excited about with Steve Barnes and, and your friend Alan here. And we take great pride in what we do in, in the forest. And we also greatly appreciate the liaisons that are able to come from the council and give us assistance. And not only assistance, sometimes they actually want to get their hands dirty and dig into dirt and do all kinds of things. And one of our recent liaisons, who's no wonder, early liaison, but he, he was kind enough to do many things in addition to just being the support that we need for our organization. And Phil George Woodshop participated, the signage at the, is, is a benefit of that. Phil was able to carve and be able to sign, that's an implication of this. And we saw that, so the trucker wanted to do something in public. So we really appreciate Phil and everything he taught us in addition to very generous donations to us. And we decided we wouldn't embarrass you a little bit and, you know, just something to, to, to recognize how much we appreciated being with us. So with that.
Thank you, Scott Telling.
No, okay, you got, yeah, you got to put your shirt on so we can get that picture.
T-shirt. Over fifteen years.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. It takes, it takes a while.
And to Alan, and to Michael as well.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
That is so sweet, thank you for doing that. Bill works, Bill's a man of many talents and he works, he really, he really talks a lot about his work over here because he truly enjoys what he does.
And I've mentioned to some officials down at HGP, the fact that our Meadows Forest, which we're calling it, was a dump. It's one of the few legacy dumps or landfills, as they call it, from the D P when it was first formed in nineteen seventy-six. This was, I think, the second legacy landfill closed by then. And it was, it was a landfill and now it is, it is grown into a real forest with a river that runs through it. And I, I would have to confess to one thing that when we have to bring supplies in sometimes, it's much easier to kind of run my pickup truck through. Then to use the gears, which don't always start that we have, don't even, but thank, I really appreciate it. And I thank the Bureau for putting in its, its efforts to, to, to make this work and to, and to support the work. For over thirty years, this has been organized and moving forward, thank you all.
And I'm Kieran Crowley, two eighteen Harrison Avenue. I have three questions relating to the agenda tonight, all development related. So the first is related to track C on the agenda in Harrison fourteen G. And so has the DOT provided a response to the borough regarding the closure of South Third Avenue? Has been a response, could you provide some color as to what the status is? Second question, now pivoting to the track A. New news. I was intentionally to come to the redevelopment entity meeting last week, it got canceled. And I'll note, since I've been tracking the redevelopment entity, I think only four of the last nine meetings have happened. So that forum seems to be very spotty. So now the council is going to vote on an agreement tonight relating to track A. Is tonight's vote a kind of a tandem of the redevelopment entity's review and approval plus the, the council? Or does it need to happen set wise? I'm not coming at this saying there's anything wrong, but I just, you know, there's the redevelopment entity, there's, there's the council. And I'm wondering just for clarity, how that's defined in terms of tonight's, you know, review of that agreement? Thank you. And finally, again, related to track A, just, I was curious that there's a redevelopment steering committee. I may not have exactly the right term, but I think Mr. Hare knows it most. It's kind of this ad hoc advisory group. So I'm curious if the redevelopment steering or rehabilitation redevelopment steering committee has had a chance to review this new plan for track A. And yeah, is there any detail that you can provide on that initial kind of, you know, review of stakeholders? That would be great, thank you.
Mayor. Hi, there's a person on the first left, yes. Looks like we do have someone at home, phone number four, 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 five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I won't mention anything about track day. I see there's a public hearing, but I too am interested. Thank you, council members, for saying your names before giving your report, most helpful. I'm sorry, I could not understand the two in-house residents or the New Brunswick man, I could hear every other word. It's just garbled, it's, it must be the microphones, although their voice is coming across loudly. Okay, I see there's, I have to ask something about the ordinance twenty-four dash two oh eight four. Oh, that's, that's the one that doesn't have, okay. Could you explain, I think I read one point five million, something about the borough versus one point one five million from the developer, redeveloper person? Oh, the grocery store is the one that has the hearing, public hearing. And further down on four dash two four dash one two four resolution, resolution for the Main Street budget. I just don't understand, two thousand and five minutes from mayor and council meeting, May third, two thousand and five, at the bottom of the page. They asked, resident asked about the community development, the economic development, a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and four, fifty thousand in two thousand and five. Administrator Trisante explained represents contribution to Main Street for undertaking the borough's economic development functions. Two thousand and four included its fifty thousand dollar seed money for redevelopment, which should be returned to the borough from developers once redevelopment occurs. Then we talk about salaried and transferring the functions of Main Street represents a huge savings since Main Street was able to do this for less. And then I have my flyer from two thousand and four or five, support Main Street, all about Main Street, shiny, one-page flyer. Economic restructuring team is part of their four teams, is it not functioning? Our economic restructuring team works to support, diversify and grow business districts. This committee attracts new businesses, hosts business, oh, thirty seconds, new point, networking events. Does outreach for local, it helps sharpen the competitiveness of business enterprises? Okay, I don't see that happening, especially if we have to get a grants rider, why isn't it Main Street? And I think track C, will you talk about that at all? Is that block two, two, oh, two with those lots? Why, why is that back there again? Thank you.
Mayor, there's no more hands raised. And for the record, there were six attendees at home.
No more hands raised?
No.
Okay, now we're going to close this section of public comment. And. Motion to close this section of public comment.
So move.
Second.
One, Karen Barr. Yes, Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Rush.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim John.
Yes.
Councilman Caston.
Yes.
Track C, questions was asked about track C. And I don't know if I should turn it over to you, to our attorney. So, okay, I'm going to ask our administrator, who is also in charge of the ED, to answer the question.
Sure, regarding the question, I think it was, it was kind of track C, but really, the question was about any status on closure of, or our opening. I have to remember our parlance and any of South Third and our permit effort with DOT. We have had some good promising meetings with them, we don't have our permit yet, but it's seeming to boil down to lighting at the intersection. And we've actually ordered, put in an order with P S E and G to upgrade the lights at the South Third intersection to LED. Because we believe that will address the DOT's concern regarding lighting. They're basically looking at everything, you know, because we want to make a change, they're using it as an opportunity to make other upgrades in the intersection. So we're, I don't even want to say it out loud, but I'm going to say it, they said they were going to try to do it this week. So hopefully, if it looks a little brighter at South Third, that means we've made some progress. Then we go back to DOT with a new lighting analysis. And then it was represented to us that if we do that, we should be able to move forward on the, on the rest of the permit. Possibly get a conditional permit with the little bit of tidbits that we have to figure out from there. So I'm feeling very optimistic, but again, I don't have it in writing, so you know, we're tilted over. So I'm, but I think we're really down to the minutia from what I can tell.
And then you want to respond to track A?
I was gonna.
I can take out.
Councilwoman Brown.
Okay, Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you very much. So the redevelopment entity is contrary to statute and the municipality can choose to be the redevelopment entity. Or they can choose to delegate that authority to a redevelopment agency, which is an independent entity, or an proven authority. Highland Park, some years ago, decided to bring it in-house from its agency and then take it, control as the redevelopment entity. They are always the redevelopment entity, they're never not the redevelopment entity. They chose early on to allocate our work stream to a separate game when they're acting as redevelopment or basically handling redevelopment work versus when they're handling everything else. That was just an ease of organizing work, not necessarily changing who they are in any communication. So for tonight, for example, we will take votes as a redevelopment entity. The votes on both the two boards, this is one on the pilot for the grocery store and we're on the track day, both of those votes will be as the redevelopment entity. I think going forward, there's some discussions about being more, doing redevelopment or more often in this room as the agency as we have more coming. So I think you're going to see us doing this more and more in this room as this group is exposed to a single redevelopment entity. But for legal purposes, whenever we're out here, we can be a redevelopment entity. That was just the way they were allocating their work sheet, so no other votes to your question, are you redevelopment entity? What are we doing here, we are a redevelopment entity.
I believe that answers both track C and track A questions. Councilmember Hale, would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Sure, I, just a question on the advisory committee. And, and real quick, there have been times where the redevelopment entity has met regularly and constantly. So that just, it, it, it's where we are in the process right now. We expect that that will be creeping up and there'll be more redevelopment entity meetings as well. In terms of the advisory committee, the, the idea behind that was that if someone was, was interested in developing, it could be a house, it could be a building, it could be anything. If they wanted to sort of take the temperature of, of people on the planning board and zoning board of Main Street. If they had wanted to get an idea of like, is this something that you've seen done before? Is this something that, sort of an informal advice about, about whether or not what you're proposing is something that is likely to be approved or, or, you know, is likely to be supported by the borough? They can ask for a meeting like that. And so what we do is we convene that when the person developing whatever the property is, 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 is trying to do something that is, 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 might be different, it might be a variance, it might be. And they can get this sort of informal advice ahead of time. In terms of track A, they did not, they didn't ask, they didn't ask us to do that, so we didn't do. So it's really just an attempt to try and provide developments and developers with a kind of sounding board if they, if they're trying to do something.
Question was asked about the community block development grant. About five years ago, the formula for the community block development grant was changed. There was a time when you could use it in all, in certain areas of town. That has been, we've gotten a huge cut from the federal government. The grant is much more restrictive and it's only being used now in certain areas of town. And it's areas that they deem, that they deem in need of upgrades. So that's pretty much on the Woodbridge Avenue corridor. So that's where that grant is going to be used, that where it has been used, I believe, for the past four years. That's where the grant has currently been used. The federal government has not expanded their reach and extended the grant to any other areas. So that's why it has not been used in entire town of Highland Park, entire downtown of Highland Park. It's only been used. It's only been used upon Woodbridge Avenue area. So because of the cuts that we receive from the federal government. So I hope that answers that question. And now we're gonna move to ordinances, ordinances that require a second reading. Clerk, can you report an ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight three?
Ordinance approving the application for long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Urban Renewal Grocery Store has been duly advertised for consideration of passage. On final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file.
Standing for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak on the ordinance, please come up and speak into the microphone or press the base and call nonsense.
Sure, audible. Here in Crowley, two one eight Harrison Avenue. I guess that is louder. Yeah, so the, I guess this is the super fresh financial side of things. So I had asked some of the representatives by email, a question around what kind of formal budget analysis has been done to make sure that the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes is something that the borough can absorb. And I'd asked this question, I think twice by email, just to kind of make sure that, you know, I'm not coming up here lightly. And, you know, I would rather it been answered, but, you know, fifty thousand dollars, I think is roughly the amount of tax we're giving up, the borough's giving up. I know that's maybe not the biggest number in the world, but I think for good, you know, fiscal responsibility, one should at least look, well, do we have to fill that gap from elsewhere? Does it maybe affect taxes in the future? I don't know, but I would like to think that before this gets approved on any pilot, there would be a formal budget analysis. Now, I've seen in the agreement, there's an interesting section, I'm gonna find it, so I don't miss the, oh, here we go, benefit of project versus costs. Interesting section, page four. It only mentions the benefits, doesn't mention the costs. So that's not really a rigorous analysis in my mind. Mr. Hale is a professor, I believe, by day. I think if one of his students, that was an analysis, and I only cite the benefits and not the costs, that'd be a D or something. So it cites, you know, it's good for revitalizing the town, it fulfills redevelopment plans, benefits for the community, improve the quality of life, yeah, agreed. It's gonna create more jobs, full-time, part-time positions, and six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in sales tax. But that's all great, but I don't know that those benefits fill the gap in taxes for the borough. Maybe an analysis would show I'm wrong, but my question is, has there been, or should there be, a formal budget analysis to figure out where we make up this fifty thousand dollar hole in tax? Thank you.
I'll take part.
Oh, well, we still have more questions?
Reverted to old.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else with questions on this?
I do have a hand up on this.
Okay, sorry. I'm only looking at the audience.
Yes. Lois Leving, I'll read that to you. If you want to just confirm and state your name for the record.
Hi, Lois, North Second Avenue. Okay, on the grocery store, we see that they're spending millions and millions and redoing meat locker or meat freezer and all tremendous amount of new stuff. Will there be new public restrooms? Stop and Shop allowed people to go way in the back, down rows, in the dark, to use their bathroom. Is there a restroom mentioned in the renovation? And as far as, I think I read a statement, thirty-five full-time employees? I find that very highly doubtful, since most retail is pushing for part-timers. I think those are my two questions on the forthcoming grocery store. Thank you.
That was the last, that was the only hand up.
Okay, so now we have a motion to close. Motion to close public discussion on this particular ordinance.
I'll move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintjohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tristone?
Yes.
Our administrator, would you like to answer the first part of the question, and then we can turn it over again about the analysis?
Sure. I, we did it, we did some basic calculations, and just to put it into perspective, the fifty thousand dollars, and this will kind of tie into my budget presentation in a minute or two, but essentially works into about point zero nine percent of the total amount to be raised by taxes in the borough, which comes to about eleven dollars per year for the average residential assessment. So you asked, what, how do we fill that gap? Well, the rest of the taxpayers will fill that gap. That's, that's how we, the budget requirement. And that boils down to the average residential assessment to about eleven fifty. I guess I would add, in hindsight, to that discussion of costs and benefits, the cost of not having, having a large vacant store and not having a grocery store, what that can do to property values in the long run, what that can mean to economic development, and what having a store coming open so quickly can mean for us as we try to attract all these other developments downtown. I don't have an exact dollar value that I can assign to that, but I, I strongly believe that, that this outweighs that, and if anything, it's gonna help us in the long run. So I don't know if that specifically answers the cost benefit, but we, this was a pretty straightforward thing. Joe, is there any?
No, I think it was simply that, eleven dollars a year to the average homeowner, would that be a visible amount to maintain the grocery store, which, you know, we were told a year ago, and I think everyone agrees, is a critical community, amenity is the wrong word, but an asset, I think. And so the collective wisdom was that was a small right claim, but all three factors to go, to short form.
And then we move on to about restrooms and employees. I don't know how many employees they will be hiring. I know they gutted the entire facility. And if they gutted the entire facility, I would, I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume that they're gonna put new bathrooms in, because if everything is ripped out, it would make common sense that there would be bathrooms in place. We will find out what numbers employee will be at some point, but I have not heard that number of thirty-five employees, so as time comes around, when they start their hiring process, we'll find out how many full-time and part-time and school, after-school students that will be hired to fill these spots that, I know that when Stop and Shop left, there was a huge gap that was missed, especially for the high school students that depend so much on this money to take care of their needs and help out with their families, so. And they have assured me that they will be hiring high school students again, so that's a good thing. Stay tuned, we'll find out, as we move along, we'll find out how many employees and how many bathrooms will be in place. And then, now, we're gonna move on, and may I, may I have a motion to approve or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight four, authorizing publication as required by law, just said, public here, oh, next, oh, I jumped ahead. Roll one. Okay, clerk, can you, please, no, where am I? Oh, I got cut off. Okay, not a public hearing, it's called may have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight three.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintjohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tristone?
Yes.
I don't vote, but I'm overjoyed. Ordinance first reading, requiring a first reading. Clerk, please report on an introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight four.
Ordinance authorizing the execution of an assignment and assumption agreement with RABM redevelopment LLC pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight point twelve A dash one at set related to redevelopment of Track A has been duly introduced by the economic development committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Set public hearing for May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kintjohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tristone?
Yes.
And now we're gonna go to resolution required separate reading, which is thirteen A dash four dash twenty-four dash one twenty-three. And we're also, I'll leave that one there first, okay. Clerk, please report and, and report an introduction of two thousand and twenty-four municipal budget.
Municipal budget of the borough Highland Park, County of Minnesota, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, be it resolved that the following statements of revenue appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that said budget be published in the Home Use Tribune in the issue of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The governing body of the borough Highland Park does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year twenty twenty-four. Notice hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by council members of the borough of Highland Park on April sixteenth. A hearing on the budget will be held at Borough Hall on May twenty-first at seven PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution may be presented by taxpayers and other interested parties.
And now it's time for the budget, budget presentation, our administrator.
Hi, thank you, mayor. I am going to share my screen to get started, and forgive me, I'm gonna sit here because I've got my mic here, and if all goes well, we'll all be able to see my presentation on the screen over to right, and also the folks at home can, can watch as well. We will make the slides available on the website along with the budget document. Before I jump in, I want to acknowledge Nerea Champion, she's in the front row, and she's our CFO, and she is the partner in crime, so to speak, on getting this document complete, especially there's a lot of state required. I, I work on the, the spending, but she has to figure out how to make the budget document come together the way the state wants it, through the, through the various local finance requirements. So thanks for staying, and thank you for your help getting us to this point. So with that, I am going to share my screen, and let's see if, yay, seems to be cooperating. And we just have a couple things around, and I'll get, get started. And for anybody who happened to tune into the work session in March, this is a very similar presentation, although the, the numbers have been updated based on kind of final tweaks we made to the budget prior to introduction. So sorry if this is slightly familiar, and apologize to the council members that are here who've already sat through this one time. So I will jump right in. Hold on, I just need to minimize this so I can see my own screen. So just to kind of jump in, this pie chart represents the total tax levy that the borough is going to try to raise, which is fifty-five million, one eighty-one, five seventy-two, and two cents. And how that gets distributed, and I'll have a couple ways of slicing slices, sixty percent of that goes towards our public schools, Irving Bartle, middle school, the high school. Twenty-six percent goes to municipal government, the work that we're doing every day here, police, fire, garbage, all the stuff that were in the reports earlier. Twelve percent goes to Middlesex County, so really thirteen percent. One port, twelve percent goes to general supports from the county, parks, roads, the sheriffs, things like that. One percent of that be, being the county open space tax that goes towards open space expenditures within the county. For example, the recent award of money towards our Felton Top Lot, that's an example of that, open space and recreation tax fund coming back to the, so just give you some ideas. And then one percent of this pie chart is the library's statutory minimum, the state establishes based on your assessed value, what the appropriate contributions towards the public library would be. Our statutory requirement is six hundred and thirty-four thousand and change. However, as we have done historically and will continue to do this year, the total library funding from the borough is closer to one, one, eight, five. That's just always been our, our approach is to fund more than is required. So basically, the municipal government, which we have some control over, is responsible for twenty-six percent of the overall property tax bill that any, any entity in town does. And so just another way to look at it, if the average property tax bill is twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents, which I'll have a little breakout of that, you know, that's about a one thousand dollars a month that basically goes towards your school, all the things that, that we come to expect, schools, town, county, and, and library. And so municipal, that's about two hundred and seventy dollars a month, goes towards all of our services, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. So just a quick snapshot, the total amount to be raised from taxes this year, twenty twenty-four, as compared to twenty twenty-three, is up by about one point five seven million. The total assessed value, if you recall, we had our revow take effect last year, this is just some fine tuning subsequent to that, so our, our value went down slightly to one hundred, by one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred. And so essentially, you take your, to calculate the tax rate, you essentially take the amount to be raised and divide it by your assessed value, and that's how you get your rate. So ours for twenty twenty-four is estimated based on the numbers, and I should have mentioned this earlier, I'm using numbers from the school, that was provided by the school based on their current and pretty firm budget. The county was an estimate at about two percent over last year, so that number may, may move, I'm sure. So the property tax weight that we're looking at is about two point five seven one, up by point zero seven three over last year. And I think the number most people care most about, what does that mean for the average property owner in town, residential, I should say, property owner in town? The, the bill would go up according to this budget by three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents for the entire year. So over the course of the twelve-month period, that's about three percent over last year. But what I wanted to point out was, as we, a lot of us experienced during revow, the, the way the numbers balanced out, property, many people's property taxes were either flat or went down. So when I compared this budget and the cost to the average assessed property tax bill, it's actually between twenty-two and twenty-four, a decrease of eighty-six, sixty-nine over twenty-two. So while it's up from twenty twenty-three, since, since the revow in twenty twenty-two, we're still below where we were there. So I hope that makes sense the way I worded it, but I think it's an important thing to keep in mind. Oh, I thought I was going in. So I'm gonna kind of drill down at this point, and looking more specifically at the numbers that we're responsible for, the municipal portion of the property taxes. Total appropriations in the budget that's being reduced for twenty twenty-four was twenty million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two eighty-four oh six, which is a change of nine hundred and thirty thousand over last year. The amount to be raised by taxes for municipal purposes is fourteen million, four twenty-four, which is an increase in about three hundred thousand over last year. We've already talked about that total assessed value, that's the same number. So the average municipal portion of the tax bill is up by about seventy-one dollars over last year from thirty-one hundred fifty-seven to thirty-two twenty. But again, just wanted to, that's two point two seven percent increase, but if you look at it compared to twenty-two to twenty-four, as opposed to, that's overall a decrease of over twenty twenty-two of one hundred and nine eighteen. So this is just those numbers kind of settling out from the revow, as well as, so I just, I wanted to put that into context. So where does this, where do these appropriations go, the twenty million, three forty-eight, two eighty-four oh six? Within the largest sector of our spending is in public safety. That's police, dispatch, fire, municipal court, all of that. That does not include contributions to pensions that's handled under statutory area. Seventeen percent goes to public works, the garbage, the recycling, buildings and grounds and roads. Seventeen percent also goes to general services and administration covering my department, finance, recreation, legal, planning fees, economic development, all, all in. Twenty-one percent goes towards statutory and insurance costs. I combined two of our categories in the pie chart, just in case you're wondering. But that's pension payments, which go up this year, I think, just for an example. You know, we had pension for police and fire going up by about eighty thousand. And for the rest of staff, about sixty-seven thousand. So those can be large increases from year to year. And liability insurance, we had an increase in over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is becoming very, very common in the state. And you may have heard articles, actually, the state actually this year allows you exemption from caps if you're, if it's related to liability insurance. Because the costs are going up with a lot of municipalities. Capital improvements and debt, nine percent of the budget. That's the capital, the borrowing that we do to support the capital projects in town. And the repayment of that debt, nine percent. And then the public library, when we're including both the statutory and our amount over statutory, makes up six percent of the municipal budget. And, and about three percent of the budget is grants. I should point out, we're at about five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in grants now. But that's what we have secured as a right today. There are likely, like the MPP grant that Councilman Hale mentioned is not included because we haven't gotten our, our agreement yet from the state. We're poised to do so perhaps even by the time we go to adopt. But there's a mechanism for inserting that much money into the budget at a later date. So that gives you the overview of where the money is allocated and where the, the key spending areas are. And so that is, that is the municipal budget snapshot. So maybe I'll pause there in case, Mary, is there any point you wanted me to make or follow up on before I go into the utility budget?
And from my perspective, can, can council members have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, so switching gears, I'm going to just take a look at the municipal utility budget. And I, no pie charts on this one in part because it's a pretty straightforward budget. Thirty-nine percent of our spending is to purchase the water that we all drink and bathe in and water our gardens with. Unless we have rain barrels. And there's a large anticipated increase in about four hundred thousand dollars due to a rate increase that's being reviewed right now by the Board of Public Utilities. So we have to, and we anticipate it up to a sixteen percent increase in purchase water prices. So we need to anticipate more spending in our budget. And while I, because to accommodate that. The MCUA, that's the Middlesex County Utilities Authority, that's the entity that processes our sewage. That's twenty-seven percent of our budget goes toward the fees that we are assessed for that. So we're looking at an increase of about a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. So those two items alone make up the lion's share of our budget. And both of those items are going up. And so I'm going to, I mentioned this during the work sessions, so we'll take the opportunity to mention it here. We will be recommending a rate chip increase to address these increasing costs. We believe it's going to have to come in at about ten percent. Because we're having to utilize a significant amount of surplus to close our budget this year. And we need to make sure we regenerate some of that surplus to be healthy and sustainable in the long run. So that's something we likely have to have taken back for the second quarter. So that's coming up very soon. So, but this paints the picture. We have, these are our fixed costs. We do have some opportunity to address sewer service charges. We're working very hard on addressing inflow and infiltration throughout the system. But it's going to take several years to stabilize. The, uh, the last, um, other kind of largest problem is operations and maintenance. That includes their ten, the ongoing contract we have with Middlesex Waters subsidiary USAHP to do the day-to-day management of the system. And that's a fixed cost. We have a slightly, we do anticipate a little additional funding required to keep on top of repairs and ongoing maintenance. And lastly, there's that capital and debt service cost of about seven percent. So this in a nutshell, it makes up the municipal budget that's before you, I mean, not the utility budget that's before you. And, uh, you know, this is, it's, it's pretty straightforward. So with that, if there's no questions on the utility budget at this time, I could move into just a quick overview of the capital improvement plan. In our budget is a capital, six-year capital improvement plan. Just wanted to make sure if any questions on the, the budget, utility?
Yes. I think you mentioned it, but the, the rate increase that you're proposing. When should residents, when, when was that?
Probably effective for second quarter, we just did the first one.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's a clear result.
That will have to be introduced via ordinance.
Right.
So last, but probably the most fun in some ways is the capital improvement plan. This is basically a, a longer term, longer range view. There's a six-year capital improvement, and I focus on here, kind of year twenty twenty-four. Capital improvements that are on the, hopefully this year's horizon, subject to council's approval for specific authorization funds for all of these items. But we have a number of building upgrades already underway, some of which were, are through agreement with the developer, with the school on Cleveland Avenue, the community center, the flooring. We got funding from the state for the roof replacement and bathroom renovation. So we're, we're moving ahead with that. We're going to need to look at roof replacement at the environmental center, and some fire alarm upgrades in, in various rural buildings. The My Lott Craft Park, we already have felt underway. And hopefully we'll be, you know, up and running before middle of the year. However, we know My Lott Craft Park is in need of some improvements. And through the MPP programs and some other resources, we're looking to bring some additional capital improvements over there. Public Works, as we've talked about quite a bit, we, we are in getting very desperate need of a garbage and recycling vehicle. We have some requests in for that funding, but if they, we don't get funded, we're going to have to make money available for our capital budget to support that, as well as other replacement vehicles for all of our departments. With respect to the utility budget, we're focusing a lot on sewer system lining where we can because it's a cost-effective way to arrest that employment infiltration. And we're prioritizing based on the category four and five, which are the worst segments of our, our sewer system. Did that townwide evaluation, and we're using that to guide our investments. As well as where we have ongoing road projects is where we, we focus on. And vehicles, more generally passenger vehicles for the community services, folks for, for in-town rides as well as for the shelters. So I think I already alluded to, we have some projects already underway that were in last year's capital budget, the Felton Avenue Top Lot. We have the conclusion phases of the Borough Meter Replacement Program. Fortunately, this is an example, and Councilman George mentioned it earlier, the new fire truck that is, we were able to get for the borough through the Kushner Estate. That was an item in our last year's capital budget that now we don't have the fund through borrowing because that was donated to us. So that, that's an example of something that will help us in the long run. And the library flat roof replacement, which was already clear this evening, or do we get to it? Not yet, we will, that is on the agenda for this evening, excuse me, moving that project along. The monies are even secure and we're moving. So that's kind of the twenty twenty-four outlook for some of the capital projects. They're, they're outlined in the budget documents matured and filed, the clerk's office, as well as we'll be up on the website following the meeting. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Any other questions from? Seeing that there is none, may I have a motion to adopt or reject municipal budget on first reading by title and scheduled public hearing from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes, and thank you for all your hard work on this. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yeah.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and I just wanted to refer to, uh, we had a very robust public conversation about budget. Terry Hover, uh, interested in March twenty-sixth during our work session. So if you want to also see a more substantive kind of free discussion, questions and answers along the council and administration.
I suggest you tune into YouTube and watch that.
Councilwoman Canachan?
Yes, and I'd like to thank the finding of the staff and everyone that worked on this as well, thank you.
Councilman Stoner?
Yes.
Thirteen B dash twenty-four dash one twenty-four resolution authorizing introduction of the twenty twenty-four Main Street Budget by title and set a public meeting from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
By the Borough Council of the Borough Highland Park, the filing signals of revenue and appropriation shall constitute the Main Street Highland Park Budget for the year twenty twenty-four. Said budget shall be published in the Home News Tribune and the issue of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The governing body of the Borough Highland Park does hereby approve the Main Street Highland Park Budget for the year twenty twenty-four. Notice hereby given that Main Street Highland Park Budget Resolution was approved by the Mayor and Borough Council at this meeting on April sixteenth. A hearing on the Main Street Budget Business Improvement District Budget will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-first in Borough Hall two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, at which time, a place objections to said budget and resolution for the year twenty twenty-four may be presented.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Or should we adopt?
Second, roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canachan?
Yeah.
Councilman Stoner?
Yes.
Now it's time for the consent agenda, but before we do so, I would like to table fourteen K dash twenty-four dash one thirty-five. And that's, uh, to go into executive session for litigation, so I'm going to table that one. As we move to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt or reject fourteen A through fourteen minus thirteen, uh, to fourteen L?
So move, Michael, here's your roof.
He's happy, he's smiling.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'm teasing Michael about the roof, but we have waited so long to improve the problem. It's literally over eleven years that we have this problem, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canachan?
Yes, and I just want to comment for the library too. I've used it a lot while I was out on maternity leave and then really using that small space to the, to the, their best to their ability, so yes.
Councilman Stoner?
I'd also like to extend kudos to the team at the Highland Park Library Express, because they've been experiencing, they're on time. I know, yes.
I too would be remiss if I didn't say, resounding, yes, 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 yes. And now we move on to appointment, appointment Sustainable Highland Park, Lisa Noise, motion to confirm?
So move.
Second, roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Definitely, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Lisa Nuss has been actively involved with Sustainable Highland Parks for a while now. She's really stepped up and handled her communications efforts and, you know, increased her online presence. And, uh, Council, Council George, obviously, you, you know how valuable she is to the community. So absolutely, yes. And Sustainable Highland Park is always looking for new volunteers, yes.
Councilwoman Canachan?
Yes.
Councilman Stoner?
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to nine P M. conclusion prior to work session. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attending by the seat.
Public wishes to speak on this soon now. If not, we'll move on to Sue.
I don't have any answers, please.
At this time, I'm going to, we're going to have a motion to move to executive session. But before we do so, we're going to have a motion to adjourn this part of the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
I like.
The next meeting will be May twenty-first, see you then, we're moving to, I'm sorry, next meeting will be May seventh.
May I just give a point of clarification? Didn't you table executive session?
No, I tabled it to bring it back, that's what I just did. I tabled it before, and then I just said, both, we're going to have a motion to move to exec session. So I closed this part of the meeting, and then we're moving into executive session now. We just had a slide change. Okay, all in favor to close public discussion? Close, now we move to exec session.